Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight and call the July 23rd workshop meeting of the McCracken County Fiscal Court to order and ask the clerk to call role, please.
Commissioner Bartman?
Here.
Commissioner Byer?
Here.
Commissioner Watham?
Here.
Judge Leiber?
Here. This time I'd like to welcome the Paducah City Commission to our workshop and ask that you all take action as you need to open your meeting.
Thank you. Well, I think you got us started, so I'll also call to order the July 23rd meeting for the Board of Commissioners and the Fiscal Court. Thanks for having us, guys. It's kind of fun to be here. And I'll ask Lindsey Parrish to call role for us, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Present.
Commissioner Holland?
Commissioner Rhodes?
Here.
Commissioner Wilson?
Present.
Mayor Harless?
Here.
This time, if you don't mind, I'd like to ask Commissioner Byer to lead us in order.
Let us pray. Our most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for the many blessings of this state. We thank you for the beautiful weather that we have enjoyed this past weekend and today. We ask that you continue to watch over the citizens of this community and safeguard them. Help us as we make decisions to continue to safeguard them and for the betterment of our community. All of these things we ask in your name and for your sake, I pray. Amen.
Amen. If you would, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. As you all know, tonight's workshop is about the convention center and their progress and their proposals moving into the future. They've done a lot of work. The mayor and I could go on for a bit of time about the work that the board does and the work that their staff has done in recent months to make the convention center actually a viable operation. Before we go any further, before anybody forgets, I want to thank the staff that's currently there for the work that they've done in really turning the convention center around. And the board also, I think it's a working board. There are several of those around the community, but I don't think any of them work harder or spend more time with the tasks that they've been appointed to do than the convention center board. We have two of those folks here tonight, Scott Taylor and Drew Hewlett. And if you would, gentlemen, the floor is yours if you'd like to come forward. And Mayor, do you have any comment?
No, not at all.
If y'all would like to come forward, yes, please. Yeah.
What I... Is this someone? Okay. What I'd like to do is Scott's going to follow me with some specifics around the proposals, but what I'd like to do is really kind of focus on the last 18 months or so of the convention center. Appreciate the opportunity to share a little bit of that with you tonight. After the hotel was opened for operations, which goes back roughly 24 months, we had some decisions to make. There had not been a viable hotel operation downtown. The center was limited in what the bookings looked like, how was revenue going to grow, what things were going to be done. The thing that I believe we decided at the time was it was appropriate to try to manage the convention center internally. That was done for a couple of reasons. I think it gave us a chance to see what the new environment would bring. It gave us a chance to try to grow revenue, grow the center without maybe the level of investment that would be needed to do it with a third party. Going back roughly 24 months, we took that and walked forward. We really have had basically two full-time employees, a handful of part-time employees, or obviously a staff that is hired from time to time, setting up, breaking down chairs, tables, all that sort of things in the event there's a large convention. What we've really seen over the last 12 months is we have seen, we just finished our fiscal year, June of 18, we had a cash profit of $171,000, which I think is exciting. We have seen trade and shows grow. Obviously, everybody's familiar with the quilt show, which has gone from one to two. We have managed those changes while trying to look ahead, tried to decide what is next, what do we need to do. The board, to Judge Leiber's comments, the board has, you know, really served in a lot of capacities. We've served certainly as managers. We've had to interview. We've had to hire. We've had to do things to put the internal folks in place to accomplish this. As we've walked along and seen some positive things happen and we've looked ahead, one of the things that goes back to Senate and Lingate and has been perpetuated, we put out an RFP in the last six months and we asked Johnson Consulting to help us look at it. The one thing that we have uniformly been told is that food and beverage is important if you're going to attract conventions that are going to consistently want to look at your venue. It's going to give you some flexibility in terms of size. It's going to give you different negotiating power. Right now, we're pretty well limited to what the space can rent for. And a lot of venues that we compete with, obviously, they've got some diversity, which we do not presently have. So, part of the process has been to allow Johnson Consulting to take what we thought was the case, walk us through a process. That process has included interviewing, asking for RFPs, asking for proposals. We have worked it down really to Venue Works and Spectra, which we'll talk about this evening. But really, the idea was, you know, who can help us run the convention center forward. One of the things that I think as a board that we have struggled with internally is obviously when you've got a very limited staff, again, two full-time people and some part-time employees, is we really don't have a backstop. We don't really have a fallback position if something were to happen, somebody were to be sick, somebody were to be unavailable, you know, what do we do? Because we really are limited in terms of our personnel and our resources. And to me, that's the one thing that I've been a little bit leery. I think we've brought the center forward. We've grown. But I think as you take on additional endeavors like a commercial kitchen to serve those, we are going to need to add employees. There are going to be complexities that are added. And from a volunteer board standpoint and limited staff, we probably have kind of stretched to the end of our capability without getting some third-party expertise, some third-party oversight and resources. Because again, at the end of the day, you know, the show must go on sort of thing if you've got a convention coming in the next week and you've got to accommodate a number of patrons. And so, what we've tried to do is we've tried to look at that and we've narrowed it down again to a couple of folks. And what we really wanted to accomplish is we wanted, we've not gone through the formal interview process before we had those folks in town, we felt like it was appropriate to see where other questions might lie, to see what concerns could be, because it's really something that we felt like going on and getting those things on the table. If we're going to ask somebody to travel to Paducah and sit down for a formal interview process, that we ought to be able to cover that at this time. And so, that's really what's led us here. I mean, obviously, we hope to have a vote of confidence going forward, but primarily, I think we've concluded and with the help of the consulting firm, I think have affirmed that, you know, the board has gotten us covered some positive ground, but what are we going to do now? And how are we going to do it? So, the asset that, you know, we're fortunate enough to have, you know, that we can maximize that and again, maximize what we, you know, what the thing was built for, creating room nights in town, creating commerce in town, and making people aware that are not aware of Paducah what we have to offer. So, with that, that's just kind of the, that's a 30,000-foot picture. It's about the last 18 months. I'm going to turn it over to Scott, who's going to speak a little bit more specifically to Spectra and Venue Works and kind of where we are today. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate you allowing us the opportunity and the time to, you know, kind of to discuss this and to go through the process. The process has been lengthy from the standpoint of the details that both Venue Works and Spectra wanted to know about, you know, the business, about the convention center, about Paducah. Lengthy list of questions that they presented that we went through and Michelle and her staff went through and provided, you know, significant oversight as to what kind of activities, what kind of background, what kind of history that the convention center experienced with regards to meetings or seminars or expos and all those different activities that you put on at a convention center and expo center. And so, both groups came back with proposals. Both groups, you know, proposed pro formas that we've shared, I think, with the judge and the mayor Harless and others that were basically proposing that, under their management, under their direction, that they would see growth in both event counts as well as in revenue stream. Both of them presented scenarios that were somewhat different in how they approached it, just their different mentality on their business structure as to how they go from whether it's going to be expos they're going to focus on or whether it's going to be seminars and meetings that they're going to focus on. But either way, the both at the end of the day came back together with a pro formas for a three-year period that were showing primarily net cash flow. I mean, they're actually showing that we were going to increase the volume of activities and bring in additional, I guess, people to the community and expose them to the community in all different ways. But in the net of the day, the convention center would come out with basically a wash from a cash flow standpoint, once we factored in the transit room tax benefit that the convention center receives. As you're all aware, we get the 1% of the transit room tax, and that 1% was going to be sufficient to, in all the scenarios presented, primarily offset, you know, the full cost of what was being proposed by the different management groups. The bulk of their proposals or the bulk of the, I'll call it, the difference or change for us is all in the food and beverage. I mean, primarily, they're looking at enhancement in the food and beverage over what we have historically experienced. Historically, the convention center has basically not been directly involved in the food and beverage, other than recently, in the last year or so, we've actually been doing the liquor benefits and concession sales. But prior to that, and even now, any kind of meal, any kind of sit-down event is catered. And that catering is not run through the convention center. It's actually, we get a commission, and that commission is a 10% commission. So, just based on what we have collected in the commission compared to what they're proposing, they're looking at a pretty significant increase in food and beverage. I personally am not in the management business of a convention center, so I'm really not one who's going to be able to quantify the accuracy or the validity of their numbers. But, I mean, these people are professional management groups. They have a long history of convention center and event center management and involvement, and their proposals are very positive. And that is historically what we have in the interviews that Michelle has, I guess, performed in various convention centers around the state, food and beverage is the bread and butter. And so, as we look going forward, trying to acquire additional events, additional conventions, additional activity in the convention center, you know, by the Johnson group as well as through others, they're all pointing to food and beverage as being the, kind of the key for event planners to want to be able to go to one-stop-shop and be able to go and get the whole, you know, the whole package that can while they're at, you know, at the convention center itself. And so, as we've already kind of committed, we've already started the process on the kitchen, and so, we're processing that going forward. And as we're seeing that, we're seeing that the food and beverage is the key. It's also the cost. And it's also the wildcard, I guess we're calling it. And so, what we are wanting to do and wanted to do and thought it was appropriate is to at least make sure that both the city and county, since it is your investment and is your facility, make sure you're aware that we were wanting to go forward with this process of engaging a management company. But there is some exposure, we feel, on the food and beverage side that is, you know, there's a certain startup process. There's a certain beginning. We're not looking at having anything until probably mid-year, probably February, I think, I guess, is what we last projected, February or March of this year, before we have anything in place ourselves. And so, the projections that they're presenting probably are not going to happen immediately. I mean, they're not going to be able to ramp up that quickly. So, there is going to be some lag time, which is going to result in some potential exposure. And so, we just want to make sure that the city and county are aware that, you know, we're, I guess, the board has voted to pursue this, and we want to make sure that if y'all have any questions or input, that we could, you know, we could go through that. Now, our average or our proposal that we have historically done, for instance, the last, this last fiscal year, just ended June 30th, our total gross food and beverage, if we extrapolate out the commissions into a full number, was somewhere in the framework of $258,000. The proposals from both parties significantly exceeds that, usually in the framework of a probably a three times to three and a half times value. So, their event count is also different because they're showing more activity, more events in the future, and so, they're once again expanding upon that based upon those different events. So, some of our concern or some of our hesitation, I guess I'll call it, from a number standpoint, is just that, you know, if there is any slack in that number, then that's going to result in the convention center having some exposure. And we've generally estimated that exposure and we're in the $150,000 to $200,000 range. As of year-end, the convention center is in a very positive cash flow and cash environment. The convention center has approximately $233,000 in its accounts with the bank. So, we have some reserves and we are not expecting to jump in the water and go full force without some criteria involved. But before we sat down with these groups and started getting a little more information as to how they develop their assumptions and how they develop their plan and some more details on that, we just wanted to see if there's any additional questions or concerns that this group has that we need to build into that conversation before we went down that road, so.
I'm assuming you're going to be staffing the kitchen. Is this going to be a part-time, full-time?
Well, okay, the projection from the management group is, would be a full-time staff, is my understanding. And their projections in their pro formas are projecting a full-time staff for the kitchen.
Will the, will it cut out local vendors from participating?
That is my understanding from the pro formas. They would have an in-house kitchen.
One of the conversations that we had the other day was, I think we had this, maybe I had it with Mary. There are still event types that will allow for local participation, though, like quilt show, for example. They don't necessarily utilize the food and beverage internally right now. Of course, we haven't had it. They might find ways to do that eventually, but they are a food truck kind of event. Mary shaking her hand, her head at me. So, they will still utilize local, or potentially, I'm not going to speak for the management company, but I'm assuming that there are...
That contract does exclude, and they do, we don't have any food and beverage on the quilt show.
Okay. So, there's still, and that, there might be other opportunities eventually for that as well. I just wanted to point out that in that situation, there will be local participation.
I'm not sure that we really know that. It depends on renegotiating the contract with the quilt show. There could be change in that and...
Right.
Well, under the current contract, right.
And the vendor may, I mean, if we have a third party, he may, they may say it has to be all, because when they leave something, we have to see how that's all negotiated.
Well, that certainly could be a question to the group currently that's not built into their pro formas. There is no food and beverage on the pro formas that they have prepared related to the quilt show. So, they're generating their food and beverage numbers without any input from the quilt show. But certainly, that would be a future question and discussion point.
So, then Matt, you mentioned that 258,000 is, did I understand you to say that's what you would, the projection is the total food cost has been now?
Yes.
Is that food and beverage for the alcohol?
Food and beverage, yes, ma'am.
258,000 total.
Mm-hmm.
Do you, where, what is the status of the kitchen? Is it, is it under construction?
It is not under construction. Steve Doolittle is kind of our front person on that. My understanding is, and Steve, you can correct me on that, is that it's going out for a proposal.
It will be out for bid shortly after Labor Day.
So, it'll be out for bid shortly after Labor Day. The plan is to have it installed and in place by late February, first of March, is what the current schedule is.
So, you, based on what you currently have on that food and beverage, 258,000, which a lot of that would probably be the beverage, you would anticipate putting in a kitchen and paying a kitchen staff to be there full-time?
Well, okay, so currently, currently, we don't have any plans currently in our budget for the food and beverage for the kitchen as it stands. Now, the proposal from the management companies does anticipate having staff, if we were, if they were as a third-party management group, they are planning to employ staff and have that in place under their pro formas that they're looking at. And now, that's a normalized pro forma. Probably the first year that they're looking at that that would actually be fully functional would be the next fiscal year, which would be the July 19 through 2020. But, yeah, but that would be the first full year of the kitchen under current proposal. Right now, we would be looking at a partial, and really, there's not been any discussion, to my knowledge, no, yes, no, on to staffing for the kitchen. No. Okay. No, currently, we haven't gone down that road because we're in the midst of looking at these management groups to do that for us, because we really feel like that's kind of outside of our area of expertise or knowledge and really don't have the resources as a volunteer group. We've got 12 members, I think, currently on the board, and we've got, you know, four different committees, and one is personnel, and then, of course, as that relates, as you start adding kitchen people, and in my environment of people I know in the kitchen industry or in the restaurant industry, that's a very volatile group. So, I mean, that's going to require a lot more oversight than we have, so. But the 258, to go back to that question, is that of that total number, about $200,000, $210,000 of that is actually the catering that would have taken place during that, during the last fiscal year. The remainder of that is the beverage that we're talking about.
Okay. So, in this document that you gave us, and we actually sent it out to all the commissioners, I'm pretty sure, you have $119,000 in food and beverage gross profit from 2017-18?
I did, I did.
How, what's included in that number?
Well, it's basically the same, but we just have gotten June numbers in, and so, that number has been updated for June. That was up through May, and that number had, and we tried to anticipate or tried to actually annualize it, but the number of 258 is actually the end-of-the-year number with the June activity in it.
Okay, so that's on top of this 119?
It's in lieu of.
In lieu of, okay, thank you. Okay.
So, the 258 is going to include the bar income, the concession income, it's going to include drinks, it's going to include the catering income that would have taken place during the year for the, at the convention center.
So, I want to make sure I'm understanding. That's not your 10%. That's your, that's what?
No, no, that's grossing that up.
Grossing it up to figure out how much was spent total.
No, we didn't collect that much money in our house, no.
Yeah, that's, that doesn't, okay.
No, no, no.
So, do you know the anticipated cost of the kitchen?
The anticipated cost of the kitchen is just short of a million dollars. That money is coming from the city loan fund, from the transit room tax.
Well, it's bonded through that, but it's being paid back by the hotel motel tax, correct? It's not being paid back by the city.
No, no, no. No, it's being funded through the transit room tax, the 2%, but it's actually being funded through the city itself, and the loan they took out as part of the transit room tax.
So, both of the management companies are specific that they feel like that they have to have the kitchen?
Yes. Both of their income streams are highly dependent upon food and beverage income, highly dependent upon it. Their gross margins are anywhere from 50% for one to 60% for the other, and that is a significant piece of their income. Of course, it's also a significant piece of the cost structure when they have their employees and their food costs and everything else, but overhead regards to that. But it is a major generator of income to offset administrative costs.
I still have more questions, but I don't want to keep. So, do you, about how many events was that over the year, like the last year? Because I guess I'm just trying to understand how they could, with the number of events currently that they had, that are being held there, employ a full-time kitchen staff, which I would guess would have to include a chef, because I would think you would have to have a chef in order to have any kind of quality of food.
Right, right. I mean, I, once again, I'm not going to try to understand all their logic, but they're looking at a total event count of, and their projections ranges from, well, it's about 180 events is what they're looking at. That's, I'm sorry, it's actually event days. In the events, real range, they actually have one that only estimates 113 events and the other one's estimating 162, so.
And we currently have how many last fiscal years?
105.
Yes, I still have more, but go ahead.
All right. Well, first of all, I want to applaud the board for what they've done thus far. Being the elder member on this commission, I remember, I remember the challenges that faced the convention center when the executive end was raised. I remember how hearing the comments from we had, we sent a person from the convention center to try to get events. It was very, very challenging having a convention center and not the hotel. So, let me rewind a bit. For me, the way I look at this, we have three, possibly three anchors downtown to bring people to our downtown, to enhance our economic landscape down there. The Carson Center, and now that we have the hotel and the convention center. The convention center hasn't operated the way we all envisioned because of the things I mentioned prior. I think hiring a professional management group is the logical next step. It does come with some challenges, but anything worth doing, you're going to face those. I think we have some very intelligent folks. We can figure those things out. The third driver is, I feel, is once we get our riverfront fully developed, that will be the other. The event, the professional management groups, they come exactly like that. They understand the landscape. They come with, I'm pretty sure... They understand the landscape, they come with, I'm pretty sure, event planners that understand exactly where we're located, the advantages we have there. They have the, the vision to see what's out there and what is here Paducah, what Paducah has to offer to certain types of events. I will, I will tie up my, my comments by using a sports analogy. I mean, you play football, man, it, it, it's, it's just life, it's just life enhancing. You have, you have a great, you have a great defense, great defense coordinator. You have a great offense, you got a guy calling the shot, he's anticipating things. But you don't have a quarterback. You don't have a quarterback with experience to see things, to anticipate things. And you got to have that. Not to say that the squad that we have together now, i- it's not viable, they're great. But to enhance and move us to a championship level, you have to have those areas, and you have to have those pieces in place. And again, there's, there, there will be challenges, there will be things that we have to work through, but I really think that this, quite frankly, I wish this had happened earlier. But that's okay, as long as we're moving in that direction. These guys are, this is what they do, this is all they do. So I think that we're in a position right now to, to start looking at that and, and moving in that direction. It will definitely enhance our downtown, it will definitely enhance where we are in what we're trying to do. You look at other, other communities that, that they have a, they have a convention center, they have a, a hotel, we're right here on the river. How are we maximizing our potential with what we have? And I think this would be a, a logical next move to do that.
Thank you. Commissioner?
You go, you go ahead.
Do you have any?
I have a question.
All right, Commissioner Holland?
And I don't know if you can answer this, or maybe Michelle can, with regards to the exposure, how many commission, convention centers that you looked at of sort of similar size and scope of ours operate at a loss?
All of the ones that we looked at operate at some loss. And usually, there is some trigger that actually acts as a balancing act, whether it be something like a transit room tax, or it be an insurance tax, or something like that is used to, to balance a portion or all of that. Most of those that we looked at had some assistance. And in our case, the transit room would be the, would be the balancer. Because operationally, just on pure operations, it's going to operate at a deficit. For at least two years, pretty much a wash. By year three, they're projecting that it would have grown enough that would start actually leaving some money on the table, we're calling. But at least for the first two years, it probably be a wash. That's based on their performance.
So that, I mean, if they're operating at a wash and then leaving money on the table, that's sort of better than what you described other convention centers that usually operate at a deficit?
Well, I mean, the proof would be in the, in actual pudding, I guess I'll call it, but yes. I mean, it is somewhat better than what they're showing, because all the numbers that that we were presented as examples of other convention centers all throughout the United States and around the area all showed that deficit operating cost.
And that's not to say that convention centers are, that's, that's sort of the model, right? It's not, they're not there to make a lot-
They're not there, the, the understanding is that they're not there to make money themselves, but to present and bring people into the community, which is where the money is made through the community activities or other businesses, so.
I have a question. Actually, it's for Commissioner Bartman, if you don't mind. Sorry, I mean, I'm not going to put you on the spot, I just have a question, though, because I haven't heard this, and Commissioner Bartman sits on the board of the convention center, and I know you probably know this way closer than any of us do, but do you mind giving your thoughts on this?
Yeah, I'd be glad to. Let me say, initially, I really had concerns about putting in a kitchen, spending that amount of money for a kitchen when there's not events there every week to put in a kitchen. But the board voted to, to move forward with the kitchen, I support what the board does, because that's how we're governed, by the board, and I support that. And since then, I've done some research on, on that, and I think a kitchen is essential to making it, increasing the revenue for it. Otherwise, it's just going to continue to flounder. I think there might be some other ways we could do some things, but the board voted to go with the kitchen, and I support the board's decision. And, and that has to be the driving force to make it financially viable. We didn't ask for, in the RFP, for a counterproposal without a kitchen. I doubt if we'd have gotten very many, if any, responses if we had left the kitchen out. I also think that having the kitchen is what really sparks the need for a third-party manager, because the executive committee, I'm not on the executive committee, but the executive committee does a lot of work, Brian Katz, the chairman of the board, I mean, he probably spends more time than anybody on, he probably spends a lot of hours every week on the things that, that he does. So I, I think we're to the point where we really need to consider the third-party option. I mean, I've got some other ideas that I won't bring up here of how it could be managed, but I think we, whatever happens with it, it needs to have the kitchen to support it. And then, we're told that there's some events when they come in, when they hear we don't have a kitchen, they lose interest in it, because they want to just come in and deal with one person and one group. They don't want to have to deal with, with the convention center to rent their space, and then deal with a caterer to come in and do the catering, and I don't know if that's how big of a problem that is, but they want to deal with, with one person when they come in. So again, I think there's maybe some other options. But I support the decision to put in a kitchen, and I think we need to take a strong look at a third-party if we can afford it. We really have to go through their analysis to see how accurate we think their revenue figures are, because they get paid a base fee for managing the facility, then on top of that are all the salaries that go into operating the facility. So it's an expensive process, and I think we still need to do some more review and work on it. But again, but back to the kitchen, and that might be kind of what your question really is, whether we need a kitchen, and, and I, I support the board's decision to, to put in the kitchen, and again, it's key to the revenue of it.
You know, that reminds me, last year, when I first took office, I started learning about all this. And I had that same first blush, which was, wait a second, can't we just, like, create a liaison that helps with the catering, and then the, you know, event coordinator only works with one person, and then the liaison works with the event? I mean, I had brainstorming, brainstorming, all these different ways that we could still use local groups. And there was this one moment when I learned, and I don't remember who I learned this from, it might have been Michelle, when she was doing all of her research, when, when I was told that the real issue is the negotiation opportunity in getting the events to close their deals to come to Paducah. That opened up a whole new world for me. And what I learned was that when you have food and beverage on site, you have negotiation room. Whereas if you don't, the only thing you can negotiate is a room rate, and there's not a whole lot of room in the range of room rates. And so that clicked for me, and I thought, that makes a lot of sense from a business perspective, that the food and beverage gets to be that negotiable piece. Oh, I will waive your room fee if you will buy this much food and beverage from us. No problem, it's a customer service issue, right? And so that really got me on board with the kitchen. I went way over on that after, afterwards. And then also learning that the market, the convention center market, this is how it happens. And, and you know, I love Paducah, and I love our willingness to try to pave a new path, but I don't think this is the new path we need to be paving. This is a path that is a billion-dollar industry. We're talking about a billion-dollar industry in the hospitality and convention center world. And so to learn all the ins and outs of that market seems like the, the learning curve is 30 years for us without professionals. I do have a few questions about the, the contracting mechanism that we might use when we enter into this. I learned that the convention center in Owensboro actually contracts with the city government. They don't have a separate board, they report straight to the city government. I'm not proposing that here, I was just thinking about the mechanism. So how do you envision the contract? I'm sure they'll contract with the convention center, but then, you know, we talked about in our meeting last week, some opportunities for some trigger points and some protections to mitigate the risk. A couple of things we had in there were just the reporting requirements that they would have, performance indicators, can we really put in some event numbers that they have to reach before they even get to X number of dollars from us? They did that in Owensboro, actually, when they transitioned. So what are your thoughts? Do you think all those things are viable?
Oh, certainly I do, and I don't know if Drew has any comments or not, but I mean, certainly, we're looking at it as, that the, the management group would report to the board, and, and that there would be monthly reports, and just basically on a regular basis, and there would be expectations, we'd have a budget, we'd have projections that we were trying to hold them to, and like we would anybody else who was trying to be a contract performer. I mean, from the standpoint, they have a commitment, they have performers that they're trying to put forth, and we're going to, would expect that they were going to be managing those and maintaining those as much as possible. So, I mean, the comments that you made last week about the trigger points, I mean, all of those are good ideas and good factors that we could build into a conversation with the management group, and to make sure that they are comfortable with those ideas. But also, just, that's, it's not a new, it's not a new concept for them to have performance indicators and have commitments to meet and hit thresholds and hit targets. Those are all very viable and very normal in a contract-based environment, so. I don't see any problem with that at all.
Okay, thank you. Well, I do want to thank you for, the board, for all of the work that you've done, and I want to see the convention center be very, very successful. But I, I do kind of worry about the impact on the local users, because when you talk about conventions, you can waive the room rate, and they just pay for the food. But my guess is, local users that use it frequently would not have that same negotiating power to have the, the room rate waived, maybe, maybe not.
They talk about local participation in their proposals, I don't remember the details, but they do-
Whether or not they would waive those kind of fees. And I, I just worry about the impact on the local community from the, those that use the convention center a lot, and would have to continue to pay that fee, potentially even higher fees, with a little bit lack of choice in service and the food.
Well, and, and I cannot speak to specifics, because we've not had that conversation with anyone on the management side. But I would anticipate that the board would still have control over that issue with regards to setting rates and setting limits, and, and having some, some voice into the interaction with, you know, the existing and historical activities and, and meetings and seminars and such. Because certainly, the goal is to retain and grow, not to have to replace and, you know, and rebuild. And so certainly, to the extent that, that that is an issue, or that becomes a question mark, that will certainly be a topic of conversation, I'm sure.
And Drew had mentioned that maybe there was an opportunity for us to submit some questions to you all that you want, that you'll be asking in your interviews with these companies?
Absolutely.
So definitely, let's submit that one, at least get their understanding and our intention.
I mean, I don't open up to any, you know, the questions, I'm trying to make notes, because my intent is, some of the specific issues that are ranked here, obviously, we're going to include that in our interview process.
Great. And I was with Commissioner Bartman, I mean, we talked about our concerns over the kitchen, but, and I have voiced that in the past, but then when it came down to it, I voted to allow you to do whatever you all feel that you need to do to be successful. So I do trust the board a lot on that decision, I just do have, still have those, some of those same concerns.
Well, I mean, I think that's a fair question, and I mean, I think from my standpoint, I would want to know how that's been handled, and how it's impacted by other convention centers that they manage that could be, you know, classified as similar to the size and scope of the, and at the end of the day, that's, that's what we really need to understand.
Thank you.
I mean, the other question I would ask, what honestly is, you know, where have the challenges right? You know, that's, that may be my first question.
Not the elder, we're going to senior.
Robert, Commissioner, former Commissioner Robert Coleman, that I served with my first, during my first term, I, I learned a lot from him just watching, and, and one thing that he, he reminded me of is, like, during the negotiations, when you sat down at the table, everybody around that table is looking out for their own best interest. So having said that, those exposures that you talked about, our man, our negotiating team, whoever makes that up, should, will keep that in mind as we work through this process. I, I do believe that our downtown restaurants will see the effects of a convention center operating the way it was designed to. The, as far as the, the kitchen, the events held there, folks coming out of the kitchen with, with the meal. But folks tend to get out, want to see the town, want to experience the, the visit here. And our, our downtown restaurants are, are second to none. And will, I, I really feel we'll see the benefits of that as we get that convention center moving the way we all envisioned it to. So again, there are some challenges there. I think it's us to, it's, it's up to us to make sure that what we see as exposures are minimized to best, to best of our ability. And then, and then moving forward with what we feel we need to do to, to get us going. So that's pretty much how I feel about that.
Thank you. Commissioner Bartman?
I, I'm going to comment on one thing. One of the challenges that we face is that that convention center was built being attached to a 400-room hotel. And it was easy then to attract conventions and big meetings, because you could negotiate, and if you rent 200 rooms, you won't get charged anything for the, the meeting space. That hotel is gone, and we don't have a convention hotel. We have one hotel next to it. I won't say this is a problem, but one of the problems is the success of our hotels in Paducah. They stay occupied at 60, 70, 80%. I know, I went and met with four or five of the hotel managers and said, you know, can you work out a deal that if we, I belonged to a group that was thinking about coming to Paducah? And I went and met with them and said, you know, can you come up with a deal to reduce room rates if we have a convention here? And they said, no. And they, they would like to do it personally, but they showed me some, they have a formula, a computer program, they can predict what their occupancy is going to be six months from now. And they say, if I work out a deal that we're going to give a $20 a night discount on a room to attract a convention, my headquarters is going to cut my head off, because we're going to rent that room anyway. So the hotels are so successful here that they're not able to make deals to bring in conventions.
Why would they?
I know, that's right, and, and you have to agree with them, that that's a, that's a good point. But again, they've got a computer program, and I know, Mary, you've probably seen that, that they can tell you what their occupancy is going to be on October 5, 2020. I mean, they can do all that. So that's one of the challenges we, we face, that we can't offer a discount rental on a meeting room if they rent so many hotel rooms, because we really don't have the hotel rooms. I think if the, the management of the hotel, I mean, the management of the convention center moves to the next level, and we start being able to attract at least meetings here and things like that, I think there's a better chance we're going to get a second hotel downtown. My understanding, secondhand from the developer, is there's a good chance he would move forward with plans for another hotel if some issues at the convention center are taken care of. They're not negative issues, but just to take it to the next level, so. Again, the problem is, and it's a good problem to have, we're so successful in our hotel rooms that we have a difficult time attracting conventions. And people come in for a convention, whether it's 40 people or 400 people, they want to have the hotel, they want to have hotel rooms within walking distance of the convention center.
Thank you. You're good?
I'm good.
Commissioner Rhodes, everybody? Mary, did you have any last comments?
No, that's okay.
All right, just in closing, I have one question, I don't think I've asked a question yet, so I'll ask one. The board, you've got, as I mentioned earlier, a very active board that participates in the day-to-day operations, very familiar with how it's operating. Do you have any dissenters in that group about going with a third-party? I have gotten contact from several people who are very much in favor of going with thirty-part, third-party management group. I'm curious if in your meetings, you have any significant dissenters and any points that they may make in their dissent that we need to be aware of?
I, I'm not, I cannot think of anybody- I, I'm not, I cannot think of anybody on, offhand that has really been, I mean, again, there've been a lot of questions, as y'all have had, with regards to how the impact is going to affect those who are currently involved with the convention center, whether it be the caterers, whether it be, you know, other facets of the business, but, I mean, really, overall, I think everybody is on board that this is the best direction to go going forward.
Well, let me end by thanking you all again for the work that you do, the times that you spent through very difficult seasons at the convention center, we appreciate you all and your board for that, and we certainly appreciate Michelle and, and her folks that have kind of turned things around and put us in a very good position to be negotiating, and I appreciate her and her staff for that. And lastly, I'd like to thank Judge Clymer for being here tonight, future Judge Executive Clymer for coming out and educating himself, there's a beautiful afternoon, and he chose to.
A lot to learn.
Yeah, well, I appreciate you being here and taking time. I really do, it's important to the community, and I appreciate it. That being said, if there's no other comments, I would make a motion to, or entertain a motion to adjourn the workshop. Motion by Commissioner Byer, second by Commissioner Bartman. All those in favor, signify, saying aye. Those like sign, our workshop's adjourned.
Hey, good, we'll stay in.
All right, we'll see y'all later.
I'm making motion to adjourn the Board of Commissioners of the city's joint meeting.
Say it.
Thank you all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thanks, guys, appreciate it.